Called order, we have resumed from the closed-door session. Would everyone please rise for invocation by Vice Mayor McCray, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by myself?
Let us bow to the created make of all mankind. We come before thee first recognizing that thou art God, and besides thee there is no other. Father, as we look around this world that we live in, we see devastation all over the land. We see hate crime everywhere. We ask that you look down upon not only Boynton, but you look down upon this nation in which we live in. Bickering among those who's trying to be in office, et cetera. But I'm here to tell you that you will have the last voice. Continue to hold us in the hall of your hand, whatever we need granted to us right now. When we have our meeting tonight, we ask that you would lead us and guide us, and that you would tell us what to say, and show us the way that we need to go. We pray for those, Lord, that was affected by Hurricane Matthew. We ask, Lord, that you continue to grant them peace, wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. All these blessings we ask in your name, why? Because you rose. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Clerk, please note that Commissioner Casello is here. All right. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Correction?
Yes.
On the minutes on page 26, it was the vote over the fee for the pool. My vote should have been in the negative to approve that, along with, I believe, Commissioner Katz.
Okay.
Okay?
So it passed three to two.
Correct.
I also have a correction to the minutes.
Okay.
Bottom of page 15, where it says motion failed two to five. It should read two to three.
I have one item that I would like to place on the future agenda items, and I would like to request that staff review the zoning regulation for possible amendments to ally a medical clinic or office at a residential community or development to serve only those residences of the community. That's for future agenda items. Like to give copy to the clerk.
All right. I'd like to add a new business. I received an invitation to go to Taiwan, and so I'd like to get approval from the board. So I put that at 12C. Seeing no more additions, deletions, or corrections, may I have a motion to approve amended agenda?
Sub move.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Informational items, Commissioner Katz?
None this week, other than that I lost my voice, so I apologize in advance all night.
Vice Mayor McCray?
Thank you, sir. Since we have a light agenda, I would not indulge anyone with my things that I did. I'm going to hold mine for next time, so we can get out early. Thank you.
All right. Well, I'm going to go ahead. May 5th, I'm sorry, October 5th, I went to the National Day for the People's Republic of China on the 10th. The special needs class from Kristen McCullough Middle School came by, showed them around the chambers. On the 11th, I attended the swearing-in of nine officers in the awards ceremony of the Boynton Beach Police Officers. On the 13th, I attended the Boynton Beach Chamber of Commerce Governmental Affairs Committee, the Boynton Healthcare Center Bruzo's Award Ceremony for Champion for the Elderly, the Chief Katz's Town Hall Meeting over in Leeserville, the Kiwanis Installation Gala. On the 14th, I attended the 201 Helpline Gala. On the 15th, I attended our Parks and Recs Fall Festival with the petting zoo, and lots of slides and fun activities for the kids. The 16th, I attended the afternoon tea by Bethesda Health over at the St. John's R.M. Lee Center. And then yesterday, I was, the 17th, went to the Historic Preservation Society and the INCA Board Meeting. Commissioner Romulus?
This past week, I attended the Florida Redevelopment Association Conference up in Orlando. Very informative conference. Glad I was able to attend, and that there were some members of the advisory board, CRI Advisory Board, that attended as well. I also want to give a special shout-out to my father, who celebrated his 70th birthday yesterday. So happy birthday to my dad. He is 70 years young. So I'm very happy to be able to celebrate that day with him. And that's all I have for now, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Well, nothing to really report, but tomorrow we have a busy day with the, my monthly meeting with the, our neighbors to the west, with the Coalition of Boynton West Residential Association. I believe they're going to be having the Candidates' Day tomorrow, so that should be interesting. And later on that afternoon, I will be representing the city of Boynton Beach at the Silver Home Task Force Roundtable meeting that we have.
Can you get the business cards with the phone number, so we can hand that out at the meetings?
Yes, that's a great idea, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for reminding me of that. I'll bring a bunch of back, and we can put them in the back there and pass them out, have some at City Hall. It's a number, it's a hotline number that you can call. It's a tip line. If you see something suspicious, or suspect something suspicious, you got this number. It tracks you right into the state attorney's office. Some of the tips are good, some of the tips that they can't use, but all the information we do have is helpful. Also, just, and I'll be expanding on this, as everyone knows, should know, that the Community Carrying Center of Greater Boynton Beach here is dear and near to my heart. And what we're, what they have this year going is called Cranksgiving. And what it is, it's bicyclist, we're going to be meeting at the former Twisted Fish, I don't know what it's called now.
Called Twisted Fish.
It's still called Twisted Fish.
It's former backyard.
Former backyard, thank you. Shows you how much I get out. And what it is, the bicyclist, last year we had, I believe, it was 54 bicyclists, and there's four or five markets that participate here, where the bicyclist actually goes to the market, and we have to spend like $20 per rider. And what they do is they donate food, and we gather food, and then we have some vans that follow us around, and they collect it, and they come back, and we make up baskets for those who are in need for the Thanksgiving Day holiday. So hopefully, we're going to have 100 riders this year, that's what we're shooting for. And I'll get, have more information as this progresses. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, before we proceed, I'd like to ask staff, is anybody going to be stating anything about mindful?
No, sir. We don't have it on the agenda, so we would be delighted if you would.
I'd like to reconsider the agenda to add this to the agenda, so that someone from staff can acknowledge mindful of an adult coloring contest, since we was requested by the chairman of the Art Board to do this.
Thank you. Put that as item G.
Thank you, sir.
Of the announcements. All right. Seeing no more comments, informational items, moving on to announcements, community and special events and presentations. We will begin with the presentation by the Fire Department.
Mayor Grant. Vice Mayor McCray. Glen Joseph, Fire Rescue. Today is our evening to present the commission to the community. Before I start, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jeff Davidson. He's the Division Chief of Training and Safety. He started with this department about four months ago, and he's a great asset to our organization. Moving on, next slide. I have control. So our personnel, of course, in the Fire Department are our biggest asset, and our total personnel is 157. 10 of them are administrative, 128 are operations. We call operations those who respond to fires, emergency medical calls, and do the interventions in the community. We are starting a new division called Community Standards, which will include the former Code Enforcement and Fire and Life Safety. In Code, we have 12 adding to the Fire Department, and to the five that we already have in Fire and Life Safety, for a total of 19 in that division. That division's going to try to merge the two divisions together to make them more effective and meet the needs of our community. That's the new standard, Community Standards Division.
Chief Charles, excuse me, before you proceed, I'd like to recognize Pierre, that was a member of that Community Standards from Code Enforcement, who has been promoted to supervisor. Pierre, congratulations, sir. Thank you. That's not a question. Go ahead.
Very good. I have several more then. Our fire stations, we have five of them located all over the city, and they are designed to respond, to reduce our response time, to make sure that we get there in a timely manner. Questions I get called, asked a lot about is, why did it take so long? The fire station's right across the street from my house. Well, sometimes that fire station is out, and so we have an algorithm that says that if this fire station is out, which is the next closest unit to respond, so that maybe take a little bit of time. So all the, all the stations have redundancies built into them, so we could have the closest unit respond to the emergency at any given time. So five stations. We have other areas that we respond to. We have inter-local agreements with them. The town of Ocean Ridge, we had a small fire there last night. It was handled effectively and very quickly, with minimal damage to the property. We also respond to the town of Brianne Breezes. We provide both fire and EMS services to all those cities and towns, the town of Hyperluxo, and the village of Gulf. So all four of those towns and villages, we provide all the services, fire and EMS. Well, our numbers for fiscal year 1516, we ran 13, over 13,000 calls in that year. About 10,000 of them, or about 80% of the calls, were EMS, emergency medical services, calls for help or assistance. That's up 4% from 2015. About 1% of the calls were motor vehicle crashes. Structure fires accounted for 30 calls. Vehicle fires, 34. Branch fires, 23. So these are the numbers, and we respond to all of our areas. Another interesting thing is that all of our people are paramedics. Sometimes I get called and asked, so why I call for an EMS, or for a medical call, and then I get a fire truck? Well, because all of our people are paramedics, we send the closest unit. So if the medic transport units aren't available right away, we'll send the paramedics and the fire truck, and they will stabilize the patient before the transport unit gets there. So generally, our goal is always to send help as quickly as possible, and sometimes it's not the appropriate transport vehicle, but certainly we have the right medical equipment to handle the calls as they come in. Fire and life safety had a total of 9,000 inspections, a little over 9,000 actually, and 3,000 re-inspections in the last year. All the buildings, all the commercial buildings in this city are inspected at least once by the Fire and Life Safety Crew, and they check for exits, they check that the sprinkler systems are operational, and all the information and safety features are operating. They issued 587 permits, building inspection permits. They reviewed 859 plans. So before you begin major construction or send risk renovations, the plans are sent to the Life Safety Division, and they check to make sure the plans conform to the state standards for fire protection and the city codes and ordinances. And then they reinspect the building, to provide the permit saying that you've met all the requirements, and the building is now safe to occupy. In that same year, we've issued about 6,000 violations, which were usually followed up on and corrected in due time. So that's the Fire and Life Safety Group, which will be now called the Community Standards Division, and will combine Code Enforcement and Life Safety to make those moving forward in the future. Two separate disciplines on the one roof. So our community service. My personal pride and joy is the CERT program, the Citizens Emergency Response Teams, and these people are trained, they're volunteers, they get some training and some equipment, and they are tasked to respond in cases of severe disasters, flooding, hurricanes, et cetera, and so on. For Hurricane Matthew, we had 30 volunteers with radios stationed in all the major areas of the city. They were able to give us a damage assessment within nine minutes, which is amazing, because they were able to go outside, they're trained to see what kind of damage is done, how they are, could be impacted. They have first aid equipment, and they have radios. So as soon as the, the storm is over, and it's safe, they step out of their buildings, they look around their communities, they report back to the Fire Department, so we'll have a clear idea where the damage is, and how severe it is, so we could prioritize our response. So these are my pride and joy, because they do this on their own time, they do the training, and we usually do refresher training at least once a year. My other favorite is the car seat installation program. In this last year, we installed 433 seats for people in the community. And when a person comes in for a seat installation, they usually want to leave a tip, or say thank you in a monetary way. We collect that money, and then we use it to buy car seats for people who can't afford it. So last year, we donated 25 seats from the money collected from the donations of the seat installation process. We've collected about 1,800 bucks that went towards buying the donated car seats. We do a lot of public education, especially with life safety. 37 events last year. We taught about 300-plus students in CPR in 66 different incidents, so we're always out there teaching people. On a charity base, the fishing tournament was the big winner in 2015. We were able to donate $8,000 to the Kiwanis Club. The Kiwanis, as you know, helps children, reading, and those kind of things. In September, we donated an additional $8,000, what, $28,000 to the MDA, the boot drives you see around Publix and in the intersections. So they raise money and donate that to the MDA. The golf tournament, which is coming up next weekend on the 29th of October, shameless plug, if you want to play golf, or you do play golf, join us out there. It's for a good cause. Last year, we were able to donate $2,000 to the Juvenile Diabetes Research Fund. So all the money goes to good cause, and it's all for good things happening in the community. We also did influenza clinic for employees, and the families of the employees were able to vaccinate 180 city employees and their families, just in the last, in the past three weeks. So 2017, we have a full year. We have to merge and create the Community Standards Division, which is well on the way. We have to hire some new people and make good things happen there. The Deputy Chief of Administration, we reclassified one of our positions to give us more leadership and management at the executive level. We'd be looking to hire somebody from the inside, hopefully, if they, if they put the name up, and then we want to move that organization forward by giving us a little more leadership and management at the upper levels. You were gracious enough to fund six new firefighters for Station One, which will improve safety and improve our response in the area. So we-
Is that 60 or six?
Six, sorry. Six. I'd like to have 60, but-
I know.
Don't give them any ideas, Mr. Mayor.
Well, that's a good idea, actually. So six firefighters. We have actually seven vacancies. We'll begin that process in January. We have to, we hope to have them onboard and functioning April 1st, or thereabouts. In the next year, we have a bunch of new equipment we have to replace. We have to upgrade our self-contained breathing apparatus. Some of these about 10, 11, 12 years old, and we need to replace all of them, so we're going to do a complete replacement in that process. The thermal imaging cameras, these are infrared cameras that are used to find lost victims either in the cold outdoors or in smoky, smoke-filled buildings. This is phase two of a two-phase project, and we're finishing it out this year. We'll be installing those thermal imagers in all our response units, first response units. Structural firefighting gear, we have a mandate by the National Fire Protection Association to replace them after seven, eight, eight years, and most of our gear is at the point they need to be replaced, so we'll do a complete refresh in this fiscal year as well. And lastly, we have a bariatric unit we just put in service. It's one of only three in the county, and those are used for people that are larger than normal, or heavier than normal, usually over 400 pounds. So we'll be able to give them a more quick and efficient response and transport to the emergency room. Up, went backwards. Anyway, that's my last slide. Thank you very much. Questions, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, because I said I was going to ask questions, I guess, while you throw me out there. The main thing I want to have you chief touch on is the heroin ODs that we're having here in the city, and up on Narcan that we're buying. I'm just saying, you know, you told us all the good things. Can you just tell us, you know, what are, you know, the Fire Department EMS is seeing, you know, in regards to heroin now here in this city?
I'm an optimist by nature, so I tend to leave out the bad news. The bad news is that we have a high on normal heroin overdose situation in the city. We ran about 27 of those weekly, on average. We have at least one fatality every week for somebody in their 20s or early 30s with heroin. We have to restock our Narcan, which is the antidote for heroin, almost weekly, because the new opiates out there take more, usually, sometimes by a factor of 10, more of the antidote to revive the patient. So it's a serious problem. We're addressing it with training our victims, our patients, training our responders to let them know that it's out there. We also have new types of opiates that are powdered form, that may be by inhalation, or by just touching the patient with the powder on them, you might get the patient, the responders might get sick. So we're having them wear gloves and be careful of any powders on the site. So it's becoming a larger issue, not only for the Fire Department, but also for the Police Department, because we have a lot of the equipment, and we could recognize the hazards. The police are sometimes in a more volatile situation than we are in. We usually, it's more calm. So it's dangerous for all the responders, and we're doing our best to address it in the best we can.
I want to say thank you. I know this is your first time doing a presentation here in our city, because you're new here in our city, but job well done, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, I'd just like to expand a little bit on what Vice Mayor said there. I believe it was just the other night, you had five OD calls and two deaths in one night. That's, that's pretty taxing on your, on your men and women in the department. Having spent over half my life in the fire service, I can say Boynton Beach has, I'm real proud, the city should be proud of our fire service and our leadership there. It's a first-class operation in what you do. In my experience, in my career, we never had those issues, you know, the drug issues that you're facing on a daily basis, multiple calls. And it's, that's troubling, that it's troubling. I can only imagine that mentally, it's very taxing on your, your men and women at the end of the shift, after 24 hours. A lot of the same people repeat offenders, to see so much. The question I have is, and I know that we talked a little bit about it, and we're going to start transporting eventually down the road and everything like this, but with so many calls of drug overdoses in the course of a night, do we, are we going to be transporting those, those drug overdoses to the respected hospital, respectable hospitals?
Good question. The drug overdose, if somebody's under the influence of a drug, that by definition is an advanced life support response anyway. In the city, we've always transported all of our advanced life support patients. So we have always transported them, and we always will transport them to the nearest facility if they're serious, and if they are awake and they're functioning, we'll transport it to one of the three hospitals in the catchment area, Delray Medical Center, Bethesda, or JFK. So our preference is to get them to a hospital as quickly as possible, but they would be considered an advanced life support, and we have always transported all these patients.
And it goes back to what you said, something about earlier, what people, how come it took you so long to get here? Where those trucks are out transporting, or in a scene like that, with so many, in the course of a night, some of those trucks are going to be out of position because of, you know, a call that they're on servicing. So I think the public has to understand that, and I know we're working very hard at the Silver Home Task Force to try to get a handle on some of these issues here, but as long as we are the Mecca of come down and get rehabbed here, recovery homes, I think this problem's going to continue for a while. So thank you for your service, and thank the men and women for the great job they do, chief.
Thank you very much. I'll pass it on. Anything else?
Next is early voting for the November 8th election. Will begin on Monday, October 24th. Doesn't say the hours. I believe the hours are from 10:00 to 6:00 over at Yzel Hester. So that means-
Seven to seven. Seven AM to seven.
Each, okay. It says seven to, whoa. 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM over at Yzel Hester, and, you know, just early, you know, vote early, don't vote often, just do it once. And, and that's, that's about it. Moving on to proclamation of Red Ribbon Week. Do we have someone come down to collect it for Red Ribbon Week? Nope. Well, then I'll just do it from up here. Proclamation. Whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic in them, and whereas there's hope in winning the war on drugs, and the hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Young Marines of the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. And whereas governments and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities, and whereas the Red Ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Kiki Camarena, a drug enforcement administrative agent who was murdered in the line of duty, and represents the belief that one person can make a difference, and whereas the Red Ribbon campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts. And whereas October 23rd to the 31st, 2016, has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, do hereby officially recognize October 23rd to the 31st, 2016, as Red Ribbon Week. Do we have anyone collecting, coming down for Poverty Awareness Week?
We have a slew.
Okay. Proclamation. Whereas Circles of Palm Beach County, a program of Pathways to Prosperity is a part of a national movement to end poverty. And whereas Circles of Palm Beach County is promoting Poverty Awareness Week to increase awareness to issues related to low-income families in our community, and whereas throughout the week, community members will have an opportunity to participate in a variety of activities and commit to challenges that will bring them face-to-face with the barriers so many impoverished people in our city experience on a daily basis. And whereas these challenges include watching films illustrating society's effort, society's everyday struggle in poverty, eating on $4.50 per day, taking public transportation for an entire day, and participating in a real-life poverty simulation. And whereas Circles of Palm Beach County will convene participants who took the challenge to discuss their experience, encourage individuals to get involved with Circles to fight poverty throughout Palm Beach County. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim October 17th to the 21st, 2016, as Poverty Awareness Week.
Thank you to all of our commissioners, Mayor. First of all, we want to thank you for the opportunity to partner with the city of Boynton Beach in recognizing poverty awareness and the struggle that many of our families in this city and throughout this nation are dealing with on a daily basis. We do invite each of you to join us in this poverty awareness challenge this week. On tomorrow, we will be taking the SNAP challenge. We're asking participants to actually eat off of $5.50 for the day, per family member, not utilizing any food that you already have in your home. And then on Thursday, we're asking that you would please take public transportation, and it's really an opportunity to experience what many of our families are dealing with every single day. On Friday, we will be discussing poverty challenging. We'll actually be doing it at our fundraiser at the Intracoaster Park Clubhouse, which will be held on this Friday from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And we, I'm sorry, it is 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and we do invite you all to join us. Lastly, I just want to say that here in this city, we have graduated several members through our Circles Palm Beach County program, and have been able to help many of them transition to self-sufficiency. And just last month, we were able to have one of the gentlemen to purchase a home here in the heart of Boynton Beach as a result of completing this program. So again, we thank you all, and we invite you to learn more about Circles Palm Beach County by visiting pathwaysboynton.org. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can we have your name, please, both your names?
Yes, I am Kimberly Bush, CEO of Pathways to Prosperity.
Tara Hales.
Program Director, Pathways.
You're welcome, Kim.
And since you all are under the umbrella of St. John Missionary Baptist Church, I'd like to clap. Thank you.
Next is the discussion of Haiti efforts in partnership with Sister Cities. Does anyone on the commission, Lori?
Yes, and speaking with Commissioner Romulus and Jeanne Havlin a little bit, they've, we would like to ask, actually, Jeanne couldn't come tonight, but Jay Marcel is here with, with Sister Cities, and wanted to talk to the commission about some efforts we would like to, the city, to assist in gathering some much-needed medical supplies to, to send over to Haiti. And we were considering perhaps if it's okay with the commission to use our fire stations as, as collection points to assist in this effort. So Jane, I think, wants to explain a little bit about what we're, what they're looking at, and Christina, if Commissioner Romulus, if you want to chime in too. I know you've been very instrumental in the organization of it. in the organization of it.
Thank you for having me. And it's a pleasure to come and speak on behalf of BB Sister City of Boynton Beach. I would like to say a few words regarding our program. The day before the hurricane hit Sisters, hit Le Cai, I received an alarming voice recording from the government of Haiti that says the US Department has just issued an alert that Le Cai and Jeremy will no longer exist. And being the chairperson in charge of Le Cai, I was very concerned. This information proved to be 120% accurate. And from emails and online messages, and it proven that it was true and Le Cai was destroyed as well as Jeremy. The Haitian ambassadors to Washington DC said during an interview with CNN that the government would like the humanitarian help to go directly to the municipalities. And in fact, the mayor of Le Cai has issued a press release authorizing the Gascq Foundation to collect disaster relief fund on behalf of Le Cai. The Greater Boynton Beach Sister City has opened a PayPal account on its Facebook page called Greater Boynton Beach Sister City. All funds received will be forwarded to Gascq Foundation. We are very familiar with the work of the foundation. Sainte-Cher is a board member of our sister city. The foundation also maintains a health clinic in Haiti, in Le Cai. The Greater Boynton Beach Sister City would like to request mayor Grant to address a letter to Mayor Gabriel Fortuné, a friendly letter.
Okay, absolutely.
And to provide an opportunity to the city employee to donate fund to assist our sister city and to set up a table at the Pirate Fest to collect fund for Le Cai. And I want you to know also that we are collaborating with Major Bernardell. And we find out that he's collecting clothes, food, and everything to put in a container for Haiti for Le Cai. And we are closely working on that. And what we are asking the city, if they can provide Sister City of Boynton Beach a drop-off space so that we in Boynton could collect and send it to him. We are also working with the Sister City of Haiti. And the Sister City of Haiti is an organization that provide relief to all the sister cities in Haiti. A team, we find out that a team of local contractors are presently fixing houses where it is needed. So our group, our association is really helping them too. We are discussing with the Red Cross in Haiti, in Le Cai, to feed the hungry. And what we are doing to that, we are collecting small funds and using Western Union to bring relief, immediate relief to, to these people. And same thing that we are doing with families who have contacted us directly. And Sister City of Boynton, Boynton Beach is currently working on a grant fundraising event with Sister City of Delray to raise fund for Le Cai and Aké, their sister city, which is also affected. And what we are doing also, we are disseminating emails and all the requests to Gascq Foundation because they are really collecting the money for Haiti. And I thank you very much for your time.
I have a question before you be seated. I'm, I'm in favor of the Boynton Beach Fire Department to be a drop-off, but I need to know if we are a drop-off location, how often will you all be picking up from the fire stations? I'm just saying, we don't want to have everything dropped off and then be like stockpiling and it seem like somebody forget. Will it be weekly or every two days, three days, or would they have to call you?
Every, every day I will be coming or I will check if they have anything. So I will be responsible for that. And when I cannot, someone else will replace me, but we will try to, to get it done.
Besides that, are you looking for medical supplies as well? You know, I...
Uh, yes, Major Bernardell will address that.
We have Major Bernardell who's going to speak to that and give a...
He will address that part, yes. Any more questions for me? Okay.
Thank you. My name is Joe Bernardell, and I'm a member of the Palm Beach County Haiti Relief Fund that is going to be organizing together with Madame Marcel. I also sit during the day as a vice chairman of the CRW Commission in Delray Beach. I was asked to verify to the different requests that we've been getting, what were the valid organizations that have submitted, a list, an inventory of things that were needed. And I have tonight a copy, it's an 11-page document, so I'm not going to sit here and read them all to you. I will be giving a, a copy to the clerk that will distribute them. And those will also will be posted online. And those are organizations that are very valid organizations. The World Health Organization, the Medical Assistance Program, this is a worldwide organization. And then there are a number of smaller organizations, Hope for Haiti, Call Her Prevention Kit, and a number of other organizations that have valid, recognizable inventory list. There is no price attached to those things because you, we're supposed to raise the money and then either procure those things or people can just on their own check with those vendors and procure what it is that they can and deliver it to us so we can make it get into Haiti. So this is an 11-page document and you will have a copy of that. As one of the, one of the items that we're, that we were asked to, to promote is this gel. This is a hope gel that is being promoted by the Delray Beach, by the Boca Raton Hospital and Food for the Poor. This is a 500 protein-type product. It costs 35 cents to make and ship to Haiti. And after three to five weeks of taking this, most of the young, young children that are suffering from malnutrition have shown incredible recovery. So therefore, we are promoting the, this is through Food for the Poor and the Boca Raton Hospital. It's 35 cents per each to produce and ship. So it's excessively miserly in terms of the cost. And then they're being controlled by two organizations that are very superbly qualified within this region, Food for the Poor and the Boca Raton Hospital.
Thank you, Major. So I, I was just asking the commission and requesting that we make those fire stations available for a collection. So what we're really focusing on and what Major will be giving to the clerk will simply just be a list of medical items, the essential medical items that are really needed for assisting these individuals in Haiti. And we can have these locations and our sister cities individuals will be responsible on a daily or just as needed, the fire stations. We can keep in contact with the fire stations and they can contact and let us know if things are coming in and how often we need to make sure we get them. So do I need to make a motion or can we just get a consensus on that?
Before you make your motion, Commissioner Romulus, I'd like to say to the newspaper, I just said we're going to vote on this tonight. I know we're going to pass it about the fire stations. I just want to make sure that you all don't forget to put something in the paper. Y'all like to say what we say. Okay. I'm ready.
Is that something we can put also on our webpage?
Yes, we'll, we'll cross-promote it.
Cross-promote it?
Absolutely.
Great.
So do we have a motion to approve the fire stations being used as a collection drop-off point for the relief effort in Haiti?
So move.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed.
In addition, I'd, I'd simply just like to thank everyone here in the audience and thank the commission members. Our sister city is Le Cai, which as you've heard from Ms. Madame Marcel, was extremely, extremely affected. And all, all the, all the cities in the south were extremely affected by the hurricane. In addition to that, it, it wasn't simply just the cities in the south, but the effects of the winds and the rains affected the cities in the north as well. So basically, it's almost as if the, the country itself is wiped out of, of just foods, food stores and, and the essentials. So the, the assistance that you all are providing, especially the fact that Le Cai is our sister city, is, is tremendous. And I am a Haiti Haitian native, born and raised in Haiti, came here when I was six years old. So country is still very dear, near and dear to my heart. And I appreciate you all for your efforts and the communication that you will give to those around you who will also be assisting in these relief efforts. So we thank you. I thank you personally, and I'm pretty sure the Haitian residents and community individuals thank you as well.
Announcement of the Community Redevelopment Agency's Fifth Annual Boynton Beach Pirate Fest and Mermaid Splash.
Oh, here they come.
Greetings. I am Lord Governor Hyde, and I bear you greetings, honored officials and good townsfolk of Boynton Beach. And it is my honor to hereby proclaim and decree that upon the 22nd and 23rd of October, there should be held the Fifth Annual Boynton Beach Haunted Pirate Fest and Mermaid Splash. Now, on the 21st, we shall have a kickoff concert that Friday night. However, this award-winning, free, fun, family event brought to you by the Community Redevelopment Agency of Boynton Beach shall take place upon East Ocean Avenue between Seacrest Boulevard and Federal Highway. There will be the kickoff concert, which will start at 6:00 PM on Friday, and will feature two, two groups, Gold Dust Lounge and Grindr Nova. And the Food Truck Invasion will also be on hand as well. Then, the festival shall start in earnest at 10:00 AM on Saturday, Saturday, the 22nd, when the pirate town of Hobbs Cove shall come alive with the best entertainments to be found. There will be three stages, 12 stages of entertainment, such as jugglers, acrobats, trapeze artists, comedy acts, swashbucklers, swordsmen, gypsy dancers, the amazing Pirates of the Sky stunt show, and the Wheel of Death, as well as a plethora of costumed interactive characters, cannons, pirate encampments, craftsmen, artisans, vendors, costume contests, and the most amazing and talented musicians to be found anywhere. The, I forgot my spectacles. Is that what you're laughing at?
We didn't notice.
Here I am squinting. Would you like to take over my hand?
I would like to take over.
Well then, then let me finish.
I have no responsibility here whatsoever.
Oh, my goodness. The festival also has many children's activities, kids shows, games, and of course, lots of pirates, thrills, chills, laughs, and high adventure, and much, much more. The age of piracy was never that much fun. No, believe me, it wasn't that much fun. But that's not all. In the enchanted realm of Melandia, where you can meet mermaids. I, I don't believe it either. Mermaids who splash about in their lagoons or hear the hottest bands in South Florida on the Forbidden Island stage. There will, shall also be Mermaid Pageant, as well as a Mermaid and Pirate Parade on Saturday. The festival shall continue until 10:00 PM, culminating with a fire show and the NSING celebration. And then shall resume again at, on Saturday at 11:00 and end at 7:00 PM on Sunday. Never shall you find a variety of fun-filled, all-day adventure and absolutely free admission. Did I mention it was free? It's free. And single, uh, single, no, ample, ample parking. Apologies. So bring your family, bring your friends, bring strangers, bring anyone you want to, from near and far, far and wide, and join us for the spectacular. What? Second-largest festival of its kind in Florida, the Fifth Annual Boynton Beach Haunted Pirate Fest and Mermaid Splash.
Think I didn't have a patch over when I...
Next, we have someone from staff to explain the Mindful Living Adult Coloring Contest.
Debbie Coles, Bay Public Art Manager. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, and I want to invite the Boynton Beach community to participate in a coloring contest. This is a partnership between the Arts Commission and AARP and HCI Publishing. And basically, the form is in the back of the room. We have a coloring page that you can pick up at three locations throughout the city or download it on the website of www.boyntonbeacharts.org. This coloring page is a sea life page, so of course it relates to Boynton Beach. And when you color this page, what's going to happen is the final winner will have it, one person will have it published in the National AARP Coloring Book. So coloring is all the rage right now. And I want to enjoy and invite you to enjoy and have a good time and have fun doing this. A lot of communities do it. A lot of people get together. It's a great stress reliever. We could all use that, right? So basically, you can pick this up anytime. November 3rd is when they're due, so you can turn them in here at City Hall. You can find these flyers in the back of the room, or they're at the City Library, the Senior Center, and also at the City Library. I'm sorry, the City Hall. The Arts Commission will select 10 finalists, and the final will be selected by the AARP Director in Washington. And on November 16th, the AARP Director will actually visit Boynton Beach, be in the City Library, and they'll announce, excuse me, they'll announce the winner. And also we'll have a giant coloring wall where everybody can come and color all at one time. So does anybody have any questions? Well, enjoy. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to a three-minute
Good evening, Mayor Grant, City Commissioners. I am M. Michael Norwood, and I bring you greetings from the Martin Luther King Celebration Committee. Would the committee members please stand, please? The Martin Luther King City. The Planning Committee is very excited about this year's celebration activities. Again, to make this year's celebration a success, we need your support and participation. It has truly been a surreal experience working in partnership with the City of Boynton Beach, the Boynton CRA Board, the CRA staff members, representatives from the City Manager's Office, the Police and Fire Department representatives, and other community organizations, such as the Boynton Beach Pathways to Prosperity, the Heart of Boynton, Father Outreach, and the Boynton Beach Ministers Coalition. I think the partnership that has been developed over the past three years truly demonstrate what can be accomplished when, when community organizations and city officials come together to make a difference, a positive difference in our community. This year, this year's MLK Planning Committee will continue to focus on making the MLK celebration events more inclusive, but we need your help. We want to make our committee as diverse as the City of Boynton Beach. This year's activities tentatively include a grand parade on Saturday, January 7th, concluding with the Unity Day Celebration in the park. Our annual award gala will be held on Sunday, January 15th. Our annual award gala will be held on Sunday, January 15th, at Benvenuto's Restaurant. The celebration will conclude on MLK Monday with the Day of Service. At this time, all programs and projects are in the planning stages. Commissioners, if you know of anyone who is interested in participating on this year's planning committee, please call me, Mike Norwood, at 561-254-2106. This is not just a District 2 event or a black event. While we celebrate Dr. King's birthday, who was black, but more importantly, we celebrate what he stood for, peace, love, and justice for all mankind. We want this celebration to reflect the diversity of our city, as well as the unity of our city. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to your continued participation in my, in our MLK events. Are there any questions?
Yes, I need to ask the City Manager. Last year, we had Mrs. Eleanor Casell from your office that served as liaison for us. Will she be serving this year? Not trying to put you on the spot, I just need to know.
No, she already is. Her and John are actually both working with Michael and the committee.
Thank you, we just need to know that. Thank you.
Want to nominate someone from the Commission, or are you saying that more than one from the Commission can join?
We need all the help we can get.
Okay. So we will be contacting you shortly, then.
Thank you.
I'd just like to make a comment. I believe Mike Simon is here. We did win an award for the MLK banner or something, I believe, during the FRA conference?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So I do just want to commend you all for the hard work that you did, and the fact that we are winning awards says something of the hard work that you guys put in, so congratulations, and I look forward to what we'll be doing again this year.
Thank you.
Before you go, see, these are things that we need to be tooting our horn on, I'm just saying, you know, and we don't toot our own horn or praise our own pardon, nobody else will, I'm just saying, you know, these are things that the community, to know that you all are winning, you know, like awards, et cetera, with the help of the CRA, and it needs to be publicized. I'm just saying, you know, you're not just having us march up and down the road and come over here for a little event and go home, I'm just saying, it's noted, thank you.
So noted, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Commissioners. My name is Tom McClure. I reside at 2004 South Federal Highway, Boynton Beach, Florida. I rise tonight as the current President of the Boynton Intercoastal Group to talk about our meeting today. Several things have happened during that meeting that I think is important to be shared with the City Commission. Number one, Officer Swan's replacement has arrived from the Police Department to serve as the Community Service Officer with the Citizens Observation Patrol. Her name is Officer Denise. I spoke to the chief a few minutes ago, and I said I'll never get this name pronounced correctly. It is Shreckin Gosht. Got it, folks? And it's easier to do as the name that she goes by, which is Shrek. Officer Shrek, though she's not green, but she is there, and she is now joined in with the Boynton Coalition for the Citizens Observation Patrol, which of course you all know is the Neighborhood Watch Program that big runs in conjunction with the Police Department, and she is a definite asset to our organization, and we're looking very much forward to working with her in the future. The next item I'd like to raise to you is that our new president has been appointed for the 2017 year, and it's going to be Mary Nagel. You have met Mary on several other occasions. She has been very positive for District 3 and of course, the city of Boynton. So she'll be taking over the first of the year. The third area is one that we're very much immersed in right now, and that is like the fire chief has said, is our golf tournament. The Boynton Intercoastal Group is hosting a golf tournament on the 14th of November at Lakeview Country Club, and I must announce right now that you can take Commissioner Casello off your list. He has been taken off the wire services, he is no longer available to the team, he will be playing with the chief today, as my call is received. We do have one other person on the waiver wire, and that's former Commissioner Mike Fitzpatrick. So if anyone is looking for a person to raise your handicap, Mike is also available for that. The, this is the second annual event, we are encouraging folks to show up. The chief is, chief of the Fire Department, I've been told that he has four teams coming in, so that's going to be outstanding. We have the former mayor, and his friends are going to be out there. We encourage all of you to attend. Also, I apologize for not doing this in the correct order, our honorary chairperson is Christine Romulus, and we thank you for doing that. And if I could take just one second, Mayor. This is a great event, it provides us with the funds to pay for the cost of the Citizens Observation Patrol car for the gasoline, and it gives us an opportunity to help in anything within the city that needs some extra funds for. So I encourage you to call me, come out, and participate in this, and thank you so very much, folks, I appreciate your time tonight.
Good evening, Mayor Grant, Vice Mayor McCraw, Commissioners, fellow citizens. I'm one of your newer citizens, and I'm very, very honored to be here to share with you that as a veteran myself, there's going to be the fifth monthly activity with your Rec and Park Department that's organizing with volunteers like me, for the veterans from the Stand Down House and the Salvation Army Center of Hope Transitional Housing Programs. The veterans in this program are struggling with various issues, some mental, some physical wounds, and some are homeless, and so far, we've been able to provide these veterans with activities like surfing, playing volleyball at Hestra Center, swimming at Denson Pool, and kayaking at Intracoastal Park, and Mayor, I think you had a good time there, too.
Yes.
So Saturday, November 5th, is the next event for our dear veterans. We're going to go snorkeling. We invite anyone that's interested in partnering or sponsoring one of these events for our veterans to please contact Wally Majors at 561-742-6255. And if anybody has any questions?
Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Lisa Brown Bannick, and I am actually in the Army Reserves, a veteran, and I'm in, I'm a Human Resources and Public Affairs Officer.
Your address?
My address is just down the street, 720 East Ocean Avenue, number 507, and that's Boynton 33435.
Thank you.
I know it now.
Lisa, other than these recreational programs that you have for the vets, is there like, especially like for the homeless, is there a place where these vets have to go, that we can house them, put a roof over their heads while they're homeless?
Well, the Stand Down House does have some facilities, it's limited, but that's what the Stand Down House is there for, it's to give them a place to live as they go through whatever adjustments and get the help they need.
How many, how many vets can they hold at a time?
You know, I knew you were going to ask. It's, I'm going to say it's not more than 15, it's a very small facility.
I'll look into it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Thank you very much for your time.
Moving on to administrative. No members to appoint, moving on to consent agenda. Is there anything that would like to be pulled? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended by the, with the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to bids and purchases over $100,000. Any comments? May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. New businesses. Jim, do you read the resolutions?
Not necessary, Mayor.
Okay. So Resolution R 16-139, authorize the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with the CRA for the Neighborhood Officer Policing Program for an amount not to exceed $263,000. May I have a motion to approve?
Second. Four comments.
Okay.
Thank you. In regards to this, this Neighborhood Policing Program, I am one of those, you know, that is a proponent of this, and I'm just saying, you know, first year I felt like they did not give us enough bang for our bucks, but having spoken with, you know, the neighborhood officers and the chief, et cetera, and Lori and the CRA, I think we all are on the right path now, and we should see some improvements. And they stepped to the plate and they stated to me themselves, they say, yes, we do have room for improvement, and I appreciate the individuals were saying that, you know, we can improve, appreciate it, thank you.
Any additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none, resolution passes. Moving on, proposed Resolution Number R 16-140, authorize the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with the CRA to provide financial support to the Heritage at City View Housing Partners LP, subsidiary of New Rock Development Partners, Inc., for the 9% tax credit for the low-income housing program for, associated with the south side of Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard, and sign any related application documents to confirm such support.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to Item C. I recently met with one of my father's Rotarian friends, who is the consulate for Taiwan down in Miami. I showed him around the city, and he asked me to put an application in for Taiwan's yearly event where they get mayors and commissioners from around the country to visit Taiwan. I have been selected, and so I request permission from the Commission to go on this trip to Taiwan.
How much does this can cost?
If it's approved by the Commission, it does not cost the city anything.
As long as it doesn't cost the city any money and there's no taxpayer dollars, you do whatever you want.
Well, I, I...
Fully support you.
All right, well, I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This is no cost to the city, right, correct, Mayor?
That's what he said.
Fine.
Will there be any benefits coming to the city?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
I'll do a presentation when I get back.
How long is the trip for, Mr. Mayor?
It is from November 11th to the 20th, so I will be missing that third City Commissioners meeting.
Oh, boy, I have the gabble, go ahead.
And we have the new future agenda item. Do we need a motion for that, Jim?
To add it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So Item E, approve the, you want to read it one more time?
Yeah, I'd like to request for staff to review the zoning regulations for possible amendments to allow a medical clinic or office at a residential community or development to serve only those residences of the community.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to, before we adjourn, I'd simply just like to ask Chief Snow, or Assistant Chief Snow, regarding what Chief Joseph said earlier about our officers and their exposure to drugs and narcotics out in the field, how's that being addressed? Are our officers, or do they have the proper equipment to be safe when addressing these issues?
Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Romulus. Vanessa Snow, Assistant Chief. As it pertains to our officers handling these new narcotics that are available that could be potentially lethal upon touch, yes, we've been providing training and encouraging our officers to use universal precautions, meaning they are to wear their gloves, if they have other respiratory items that they can wear to avoid inhalation, we have been communicating that with our officers, yes.
I have a question before you be seated. In regards to that, I'm just saying, that was an officer, not in this area, but was attacked by an individual who was on flakka. Are you all being trained on that and aware of these type of procedures when you all go out?
Yes, sir, that's also something that we've been training on, and that's a unique issue to deal with for our officers, but yes, they are well-versed on how to handle individuals that are on flakka.
Thank you. Stay safe.
Chief Snow, I'd just like to say that was a great presentation, the quarterly Town Hall-type meeting that Chief Katz and his staff put on, it was well-attended. I did note one thing, though, that as the chief was introducing his staff, he kind of threw each staff member under the bus as far as what sports team that they supported. And there he was, and, yeah, and...
Payback.
But I'm talking about the Pittsburgh Steelers, and not once did he mention the Steelers up there, but he did mention a half a dozen other teams, and I thought that was pretty, pretty sneaky of him, for lack of a better word.
Those can be in timing, yes, sir.
We've all mentioned it to him, though.
Oh, okay, good.
Thank you.
No more comments, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.